Monday, March the 12th. John, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are celebrating Business Appreciation Day, as I understand it. Tell us about Business Appreciation Day.
Good evening, members of City Council. This week is Business Appreciation Week. Every year, we take the week leading up to St. Patrick's Day to thank the companies in our community for making Dublin such a great place to do business. The event, the week culminates with Friday, where we will actually take four different Irish bands around to eight different office buildings across town to help get them in the mood for St. Patrick's Day and the spirit that goes along with that. It's always a lot of fun and a great way to thank the companies, as well as the employees themselves, for all the great work that they do in our community. So for the proclamation, we'd like to recognize one of the companies in our community. Today, we'd like to invite Will Zimmerman. He's a marketing operations specialist with Innosource, who's a new company in our community, to accept the proclamation.
Please, come on up, Will. Thank you for joining us. And what does Innosource do? Describe what your day is like.
So at Innosource, we provide outsourced recruiting and management services. So we specialize in recruiting services for entry-level business positions, customer interfacing positions, contact center-type work. We do a wide variety of work.
Great, fantastic. Thanks for coming in. You know, people will ask me what is the most important component of Dublin, and I think our business community is without exception, as I describe it, is the tip of the spear. If we didn't have our business community, none of the other things that we do would be possible.
Absolutely.
We really appreciate you having you here in Dublin as a corporate resident, and I have a proclamation for you. Whereas Dublin, Ohio is known for its thriving corporate community, from our hallmark international businesses to our emerging companies built with robust entrepreneurial spirit, and whereas world-class companies like Innosource go beyond doing business in Dublin and also contribute to the international success of our community through exemplary corporate citizenship, and whereas the Dublin business community enables smart and innovative organizations to realize their business goals by supporting a collaborative environment for success, and whereas the vast majority of new jobs created in Dublin have come from existing businesses within this community, and whereas Dublin's continued economic vitality is the result of high-quality development supported by the city's existing business community, and whereas Dublin is proud that more than 4,300 companies have chosen to make Dublin their home, and whereas the city of Dublin is a beneficiary of the outstanding work and knowledge of more than 70,000 employees within our community, and whereas Dublin businesses have contributed significantly to the overall economic well-being of Dublin, the central Ohio region, and the state of Ohio, and whereas the city expresses its sincere appreciation to all Dublin businesses and employees for choosing to work and innovate in Dublin, and whereas the city invites all Dublin businesses and employees to celebrate the Irish spirit present throughout this community, not only on St. Patrick's Day, but throughout the entire year. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, March 16, 2018, as Dublin Business Appreciation Day in the City of Dublin, celebrating the continued success of our business community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Didn't I read that? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, Julie. There she is.
I brought some friends with me.
Bring your friends with you, Julie.
Good evening, everybody. We are really here to say thank you, and we sent some materials ahead of time so that you could review those. So we're not going to go through the PowerPoint, which I'm sure you're very grateful for, but we did want to give you some information and let you know that this is our 40th anniversary this year of being in this community. We started, as many of you know, as Dublin Counseling Center, and after our merger in 2013, we became Centero, and we have served more Dublin residents, both in the schools and older adults in the community, and just residents of all ages at our outpatient clinic off of France Road than we ever have in our 40-year history. And a big part of that is because of your support and your ongoing support. So we're here to say thank you, and I wanted to introduce you to some people. These are the folks that actually do the real work. So I'm going to introduce you. This is Holly. Holly Goldberg is our Director of Older Adult Services. And Holly is actually going to retire this week.
Oh.
But after many, many years.
Well, then Holly, sit down. What did you do?
Yeah. No, the good news is she's staying with us part-time so that she continued to do some of the work she's doing at the Dublin Rec Center. She has turned into quite the rec star at the senior center doing...
Tell them that's the favorite thing.
The favorite thing she does. So that's the favorite thing she does. So she's going to stay with us part-time to do that. So she's not really retiring. And this is Stephanie. Stephanie does a lot of that work in the older adult, with older adults in the community in their homes, out in the community, interfacing with the faith community, with different community centers. So she is both, these guys are rocking it in the community. They're out there. So if you look at the data, they're doing a lot of that work. And then this is Victoria, and Victoria is also with our older adults team. She's our new coordinator, but she's been with the organization for a long, long time. She started in our front office at Dublin, and then you became a case manager, then an intern, and now she's a coordinator of our programs, one of our programs. Where's everybody else? Okay. Susan Ortega is back here. She's the Director of our Youth and Prevention Programming. And she oversees all of our school-based programming, so she's been doing a ton of work in the schools, and we've served thousands of Dublin students in the schools at both, at all levels. So Susan's a big part of that. And then, why don't you introduce our newest staff person?
So this is Melissa, and this is her third day with Centero.
She's really new.
So you will be seeing a lot more of Melissa around Dublin. She is the new Dublin Schools Coordinator. So she will be overseeing programming at Dublin City Schools specifically.
Great.
And then this is Sue Huttrus, who is the Coordinator of the Dublin Act Coalition, and that's an underage youth coalition that works with many members of the community. We've been working with the city, with the police department, the fire department, the schools, Centero, a lot of different corporations to look at really fighting mostly the opiate epidemic lately, unfortunately, but Sue is the coordinator of that programming. And you, with City Dollars, are funding a lot of the supportive services that these folks are providing. And there's a lot more folks, but I want you to meet some of the key people that are providing the services in the community.
Great. Thank you very much, Julie, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
It is, you know, as society evolves, your challenges change from time to time, and it's a generational thing. And now, with this opioid crisis that we have continued to try to wrestle to the ground, the resources and the support that you give to our community and in our schools, I mean, it's everywhere. And if you don't think it's everywhere, you're not paying attention. So thank you so much for constantly, for 40 years, responding to the calls to whatever our needs have been. So there's a reason why this body, and it's not just these people, but this city, has been so supportive of what you do, because what you do is so important. You know, we're really, we've been talking a lot about the aging in place idea, and we're going to give you a lot of support in that regard as well, so.
We just had a very exciting meeting with Michelle and Christine and a couple of folks today to talk about some pilot programs, so we're very excited. And, you know, the aging in place services, we've definitely expanded those services with your support as well. So we're excited, and these are some of the folks you'll be working with.
Fantastic. Council, any questions? Mike?
Julie, I appreciate the efforts on aging in place, because I am aging in place.
He's aging as we're sitting here.
We're glad you're staying here, Mike. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you very much, Julie.
You know, Mayor, it was really nice meeting a lot of the people, the staff. We don't always get that opportunity. Julie, I appreciate you bringing the staff up, the workers, because I don't remember too many times when we've really had that chance to do, so thank you.
And I actually am going to let them know, because I told them to be an hour early.
Oh, geez. Please, Julie. Thanks, Julie. Someone signed in, and I can't tell whether they signed in to just let us, and it says attendee only. Did you want to speak?
To speak.
Oh, did you want, oh, come on up and tell us who you are and why are you attending?
I'm attending because, this one, I'm a member of the Dublin Executive Academy, and we met Chris and Kathy the other day, and it's one of the parts of the curriculum to be attending one of these city offices.
Oh, great. So it's the Leadership Dublin program.
Leadership.
And what was your name?
Sulek.
And it's S-R-E-L-A-K?
It's S-U-L-A-K.
S-U-L-E-K, and it's S-I-N-G-H?
Yes. Are you going to give me the points then?
Yes. Oh, you're going to get points. You will get your points. Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, approval of the minutes from the February 26, 18 regular council meeting. I move to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Judy?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinance, ordinance 21-18, Judy.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 1.015 acre, more or less, temporary easement from OCLC Incorporated located at 6565 Kilgore Place for the public purpose of constructing the city's sanitary sewer infrastructure project.
Megan?
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes with this ordinance since the first reading, and approval of the ordinance will allow us to secure the necessary temporary easement to begin construction around May 1st on this important sanitary sewer project.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Judy?
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-18, Judy.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Accelerate Media Incorporated to induce it to lease a facility to retain an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Kyle?
Good evening, members of council. There is no change to the incentive proposal as introduced at the first reading. However, with us tonight, we have a representative from Accelerate Media, Ms. Courtney Binns, who is the Director of Client Services.
Hi, Courtney. How are you? Thanks for coming in.
Good. Thanks for having me.
Kyle, are you done? That's it?
I'm finished.
Okay.
Okay.
Courtney, tell us about you and what you guys do and...
Sure, sure. So I'm Courtney Binns. I'm our Vice President of Client Services for Accelerate Media. Been with the company for 10 years, and we do custom online training. So we were founded in 2002 and have been in historic Dublin since 2003. Love our office space. We love being able to walk and be a part of the community, so, and we appreciate all of your support.
Oh, I think. So Chris tells me you're above Shadow Lane?
Yes.
What a great location.
Yeah, and Johnson's just opened right below us.
Right, there you go.
Ice cream. So that's, makes it even harder, yeah.
Fantastic.
You guys were in online training before it was a thing?
Yes, we were.
You were one of the pioneers, really?
Correct.
In the community.
Yes, absolutely.
That's wonderful.
Proud of it.
And you keep your eye on that, it's fantastic.
Yes, we do, yes.
Well, we're thrilled to have you here, Courtney, so thank you very much for coming in. Any other questions from council?
I have a question just for legal. In the contract, it says that the income taxes are filed directly with the city and not through the Ohio Business Gateway, which is a good idea, and I was just wondering if that was something that we put in all of our contracts, and will we put that in in the future, considering the new municipal tax possibility?
We did. We worked with legal counsel to make sure that any new economic development agreement that is entered into from this point forward includes that language.
Great. Thank you.
You guys do some pretty impressive stuff. I looked around and saw your CFO has gotten amazing awards and...
Yes.
Their company is doing really exciting things, so congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Great, perfect. Judy? We're ready.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-18?
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you for coming in, Courtney.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Viva Systems Incorporated to induce it to lease a facility, to relocate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Hello again. There have been no changes since the first reading for this economic development agreement proposal, although I am joined this evening by a member of Viva Systems to speak to the project.
Come on up. Are you Catherine?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm Catherine Allshouse. I'm Viva Systems' Global Chief Information Officer and also serving as General Manager of our new Viva Columbus facility, which we're very excited about. So Viva was founded in 2002. We are a enterprise software company headquartered in Silicon Valley, California. We make CRM software for life sciences companies, so think biogenetics and big pharmaceutical organizations, from ideation and formulation through clinical trials, FDA approval, the launch of the product, and then pharmaceutical reps taking samples to doctors' offices, kind of that whole lifecycle is the software that we make. We have offices in 55 countries. Our products translate into 29 languages, and we have been lately looking for a place in the United States to build our second headquarters, locate some of our core development operations for our product, as well as other supporting activities like finance and HR and services and consulting and so forth. So after a search and working with folks like Rachel and the other folks at the state of Ohio, we decided on Columbus and specifically Dublin to do that. So we have a small support operation located in Hilliard, but we really were looking for hardened core infrastructure, a professional office environment, and then the ecosystem surrounding that, like we found in Dublin, to support our growing employee base that we want to establish here. So that's why we selected Dublin. We're really excited to be here. We have our eye on, we're inches away from a lease in Dublin that we're very excited about, in a building that really suited our needs. So we're happy to look forward to calling Dublin our second home.
Fantastic. We are looking forward to you calling Dublin your second home, so that's all great. Any questions from council?
Welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Judy, go ahead.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ordinance, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. Ordinance 24-18?
Amending Sections 2 and 14 of Ordinance 1517, Compensation Plan for Non-Union Personnel pertaining to the Division of Recreation Services.
Matthew?
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes since the first reading. Be happy to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval at this time.
Questions from council? Judy?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-18?
Adopting and Enacting a Supplement S43 to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
No change. Staff recommends approval. Questions from council?
I have one question I didn't ask when we were together last, and I should have. Were there any significant changes in these policies that we're adopting that deviate significantly from our current policies?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Judy?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Introduction, first readings on ordinances. I will make a motion that for the next three items, they're all land appropriations for the Highland Road Roundabout Construction Project. I will introduce the ordinances 26 through 28-18, a move to waive the rules of order regarding reading by title only and have the names and addresses of the property owners read into the record. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Thank you, Christine. Judy?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Judy, if you could kindly read the names and addresses of the property owners.
Linda L. O'Brien, 9635 Highland Croy Road; Kevin Caldwell Horstfield, 7848 McKittrick Road; the Board of Park Commissioners of the Columbus and Franklin County Metropolitan Park District for property located along Highland Croy Road.
We need an introduction.
I guess...
I'll introduce it.
Yep, thanks, Mike. Yep. Paul?
Mayor, or members of council, the city of Dublin intends to construct a future single-lane roundabout at the intersection of Highland Croy Road and McKittrick Road. The 2018 and 2022 capital improvements program, site acquisition for 2017 and also this year, 2018. Construction of the intersection improvement is presently reflected beyond the current five-year CIP period. Proceeding with the acquisition of property interest now enables the city to commence construction of the roundabout when programmed in the CIP. Furthermore, presently securing the necessary property interest avoids any future increases in land values and provides the right-of-way and easements for any necessary utility relocations, which would have to be done in advance of construction. The proposed roundabout will increase safety, capacity, and site visibility at the intersection. The project requires the acquisition of property interest from multiple property owners on the Highland Croy Road and McKittrick Road corridors. The property acquisitions this evening involve three property owners specifically, and I'll walk through those very quickly for you. Mr. Kevin Caldwell Horstfield, who lives at 7848 McKittrick Road, we settled for the appraised value on his particular property, which was $9,490. Ms. Linda O'Brien, she lives at 9635 Highland Croy Road. That would be this property. This is Mr. Horstfield, and this is Ms. O'Brien. We did settle for just a 5.8% over the appraisal, which was $10,500. And then lastly, I won't go through the entire name, but basically the Metro Parks of Columbus and Franklin County, which would be this particular property, and then also down here. So it's on the west side of Highland Croy Road, both south of McKittrick and north of McKittrick, and we had four different acquisitions from the Metro Parks. They were agreeable to donating all of the interest to us, which we greatly appreciate. Although initially, the intersection improvement will be constructed as a single-lane roundabout, sufficient right-of-way is being acquired to provide for any future expansion of the roundabout. The city certainly participated in good-faith discussions with all the property owners. We have obviously come to these mutually agreeable terms, and in particular, the donation from the Metro Parks, which again, we appreciate. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinances presented before you this evening at the second reading and public hearing on March 19th, which is in a week. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Now, just a comment again. I want to thank Metro Parks and their Board of Directors. That was quite a bit of land they gave up.
They did.
Much appreciated.
Yep.
Great teamwork with that group up there.
Okay, great. We'll see you back on March 19th on those three ordinances. Under the other portion of the agenda, the library transitional piece. This says Terry Fogler next to it.
Good evening. As council recall, when the plans were reviewed for the new library, council had, at the basic development plan stage, required that a citizens advisory group be established to help provide input to develop a transitional, what was called a signature transitional element as part of the library project, so that it would better provide a transition between Dublin's historic core and the more contemporary design with the building. The committee did meet on several occasions, came back with some preliminary recommendations to council, ultimately came back with a final recommendation, which was incorporated into the final development plan, which council approved, and that project has moved forward. The, if you recall, in the September meeting on this discussion, the Columbus Metropolitan Library had indicated that they had not budgeted for this item. There was discussion about the city funding this piece of the improvements. I think at that meeting, there was some discussion with regard to art in public places as one possible thing to be considered on this, but nothing was really addressed or finalized at that time. The materials that you received from the Columbus Metropolitan Library attached to the memo, that I think you also received at your last meeting, indicated that they have moved forward with final design, have the bidding. The project, which was estimated last September, the cost about $210,000 with design and construction piece, has come in just under $150,000 at this point, final, and the Columbus Metropolitan Library has asked that the city would affirm its willingness to reimburse it for the cost of that element. So that's the item that's before you this evening. The administration is recommending that council approve the motion to reimburse the Columbus Metropolitan Library $148,805, I'm sorry, $148,805, which is the cost of the signature transition element once completed, which is located on the plaza of the new Dublin Branch Library, and that such reimbursement be funded from the city's parking garage and associated roadway project and CIP contingencies as recommended by the administration. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
I have one. Terry, could you explain to me just, I'm naive about this, what is STE stone on the stone? I take it that's what the stone on the arch is?
Yeah, I think in the signature transition element, that did include the stone material on. If you remember, they were looking at brick and stone for a period of time. I think there is a matching stone element on there with there that does include the With there that does include the stone, all of which got finally included in the building.
Your question, is it synthetic?
Is it synthetic or is it real stone?
I don't know. It was the same materials that were shown with you on the building project, but I'd need to get the plans out to show the precise materials on it. It is, as it was approved, on there with the same materials that were proposed for the building.
I just don't recall.
Okay.
Have to get back to you.
And the only reason I ask is because, in the historic district, because I feel so strongly about this, and I think many people do, that whenever we have the opportunity to build something new, it'd be nice to be able to use real stone, because we sit on a quarry. That's our background, that's our history, that's our roots. So I wasn't here when this was there, but I would just always request that you always ask for the materials be authentic and not stuck on.
And I believe there in this case, I'll certainly bring you back that material information.
If you could check it, let us know. I mean, if that's the reason why the price came in so much lower, that there's a different material.
No, I just think the bidding came in better, and I think also, we made sure that they just charged the net increase in cost for building this, because you would have had other materials and other things in that plaza.
Yeah.
I think that was just estimating.
I would like to know, and I wouldn't stop this, but I think because it's a historic transition piece, to have stuck on stone, just wouldn't get it, right? That's how I feel about that, so.
We'll certainly bring that information back, so you're aware. I think this was bid, they had bid both as the, as indicated before, when they were looking at a brick option and a stone option, council insisted on the stone option. My understanding was there were elements of the transitional element that had, that were bid both ways as well, but they did go with the stone under all scenarios.
Yeah. Would like to know if it's authentic.
Will do.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I had a couple of questions. So I see that there's a construction contingency, so I'm assuming this is a fixed-price bid, is that correct?
When we make reference to the, in this price, we would recommend this be not to exceed this number.
Okay, so this construction contingency is for our estimate?
Yeah, when we make reference to construction contingency in the memo, we're referring to, in the CIP, there is a line item for CIP contingencies in general, as well as for the project, for the road and the parking garage and the grounds of remembrance, we also have contingency. So the goal would be, if the appropriation for the project contingency has sufficient money for the reimbursement, that's where it would come from first. Secondarily, it would come from the larger CIP line item contingency within the larger budget.
Okay. And this is for the construction of the element, are there any landscaping or other things around this element that we would be considered part of what we think the city has agreed to?
I don't believe so. I believe these are all physically what was brought forth with regard to that design element. It got integrated, we went back and evaluated the cost and had the folks break the cost down by materials, but I don't think it included landscape materials.
So is there landscaping in that plan around this element?
Well, there is landscape material throughout the plaza.
Yeah, the whole plaza has a plan that was approved already.
And that's included in the place of the plaza?
Yeah, the rendering we showed you in the memo is basically the most recent view and perspective we have of what is being built.
And then sort of my final question is, in, there was discussion about whether this should be funded out of the arts and public places budget. What is that budget? I searched for that today without a lot of success. So Angel, could you help me?
Sure. So you won't see an appropriation amount for that. What we do is reduce it from the Arts Council's distribution, or yeah, the Arts Council's distribution of their bed tax funds. So we do a monthly deduction for their rent for the building pursuant to the agreement that we have with them, and then a reduction for the art and public places funding, which comes out to $75,000 a year. So every two years, there's a $150,000 bucket in order to fund art and public places. So the next phase would be for 2018 and 2019, there would be $150,000 available.
So this would consume all of that?
Right, which is why we opted to use the contingency money as opposed to tap into the art and public places.
We were, I think, Michelle, we were behind a year on that, on the use of those funds, or we skipped one year for art and public places, and the discussion of that being available for this, back when this was being reviewed and approved, was the idea that it was kind of an art and public places kind of a, an amenity. And as we've looked at that at staff level, we felt, you know, we probably shouldn't impose on those, that funding and keep that separate, since that's an Arts Council project-type funding. So we felt that, therefore, we felt contingencies, because we had a couple of opportunities with contingencies to fund that.
We did the $75,000 a year for two years, so we'd get to the 150 number, because we knew we could do a better project at 150 than we could at 75 each year, so.
That makes sense, thank you.
And when they do those parks and public places, they generally search for an artist, and, you know, this isn't really, doesn't really have an artist, although the architect is arguably an artist, but it's not in the same vein as you would have your typical piece of public art.
Yeah, the Arts Council really appreciates that we're taking this on, because they do want to set a paradigm for high-quality art for our community, and as stated, this is an architectural sort of throwback to a building that once existed and isn't exactly what we've been creating here for our community, so.
Terry, I've got a question. What was the overall contingency for this project?
You say the overall, are you referring to the?
For the, our parking garage, our overall contingency on this entire project, that we're taking the, this portion out of, the 150?
Well, there's several buckets of contingency. There's contractor contingency, there's owner's contingency. All of them together was $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 kind of range, I'm thinking, all of them collectively. We actually believe that we will not need to go to the capital improvement funds contingency. We think there will be sufficient dollars. If you remember, we had an allocation in there for grounds of remembrance, because it was based on MKS cases. Those numbers have actually come, that was a $650,000. Those have actually come in less. The rock work, which is kind of the most volatile part of the construction, is basically done up there. So we feel that there will be contingency money sufficient to fund this within that appropriation. I can get back to you with the precise dollar amounts of all the contingency line items, however.
That'd be helpful. I saw where they cut out the rock face for those utility boxes there, and it's really a nice feature. I mean, that, I think that really softens the look of those boxes, and in as much as rock face as we can possibly save in the district, the better off we're going to be.
We concur.
So Terry, just regardless of how this thing is funded, this needs, it has to be constructed per the plan?
Correct. And those plans have been reviewed by staff, all the planning and zoning items, and those elements have all been approved.
I see. So, okay.
So they have the permits and they have the bids in hand.
Just two quick comments. Are we going to have, what makes that, and when you look at the pictures here, and you see the picture of the old, the old black and white of the school and all that, are we going to have, and I get it, there's an allocation for like a cement thing, cement marker and those sorts of things. You know, when we did the, when we dedicated to the couple over on Riverside Drive by the, and we have the stone, yeah, and we have their picture, and it's on a placard and all this stuff, are we going to put up any, because what makes that feature really cool is the story that goes along with it. It's not just having that corner there, it's the story that this is generally where that old school was. Are we ever going to put, and I understand it's not part of this, but just out of curiosity, do you think we could put up some kind of a placard that tells that story, so that when people stand there and see it, they'll know what that's all about?
I thought when the committee recommended this, I could be wrong, that there was some feature on the inside of the corner that would speak to the history, and then the idea too, was the original outline of the school building would be incorporated in the plaza as well, I believe.
That's correct. We can bring you the details on that. I can't remember, I remember there was discussion and something was agreed upon, but I can't remember exactly what was agreed upon.
I don't mean to say that the price doesn't bother me, but the, and I understand that that might not be included in this, and that's fine with me, I still think it's a really important feature to have to tell that story.
Definitely a key component to that, is to explain its history and everything.
Yeah, and even if we can etch a picture of the building into it, you know, whatever it is that the creative people come up with, I just think that that's what makes that element really dramatic, is if you know the story, otherwise it's just a corner.
Hey, and Greg, from a technology perspective too, and an app, and I know that conversation's happening, that work is being done to tell that story.
Yeah.
Because the audio with voices and historic perspectives can really bring it to life, so.
Really, really bring to life, it'd be really.
Could just be done as an app. I mean, we've toyed with apps with the historical society, as you can walk through the district and use apps to get history, and I, we were working with them on that, I don't.
I'm seeing, yeah, some nodding. So that would be fantastic, because then it really comes to life, to your point.
The more that we can sort of bring that into this, what makes it really a difference. And the only other comment I would have is, you know, I sat down with Tim Frommeyer, who's the president of the board, I don't know exactly what his title is, but he's the head of that board for the library, and when we talked about this signature transitional element and the plaza, those were the things that really were an effort to sort of soften, I know someone used those words, Chris, you, sort of soften this building a little bit and make it look more organic, that it, the way I described it, is growing up from the ground as opposed to coming down from the sky. So I'm glad to see this is moving forward, I'm very, I'm comfortable supporting this. I just want to remember that that plaza and this transitional element were what we tried to grab onto to help address some of the concerns that were out there. So I'm looking forward to all those things moving forward, the way that we anticipated they would, and them to succeed in the goal that we hope that they would, the success that they would have, so.
Just one really quick nitpicky little note. In the memo from the libraries on February 22nd, on page two, under the signature transition element paragraph, it states that they brought it to council on September 10th, but that was a Sunday. I believe it was the 11th, so I'm just making note of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, I think I need to, what, make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation to fund this thing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. Judy.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Groom?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aluda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff comments. Dana?
Yes, not to steal anyone else's thunder tonight, but I wanted to thank staff and
Yes, not to steal anyone else's thunder tonight, but I wanted to thank staff and everyone for putting on the St. Patrick's Day events, the parade and so forth. And obviously, most importantly, that the community came out and showed great support. And we were very fortunate to have the nice window of weather that we had. How we pulled that one off, I don't know, but it did work out. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone for all their efforts with that. The other item you'll find at your seat tonight is really initiated by Michelle Crandall. I want to give her credit for working this issue diligently since council set this as a goal a couple of years ago to make sure that we have a farmer's market. This memo speaks to, and we'll get this out to the public, obviously, in cooperation with the folks over at Bridge Park. But a farmer's market will return to Dublin this spring. We have not had one for a full year. Today Crawford Hoing announced that they will debut the Dublin Market at Bridge Park, and there's a flyer with your memo. This new market will be held on Saturday mornings from 9:00 to noon, and it will run from June 9th to September 29th. I think you might recall the last one we had tended to be like on a Wednesday, late afternoon, evening. And to have this on a weekend, on a Saturday, and they listed, they said they've got a commitment here from quite a few vendors and have interest from others. So pretty exciting opportunity in bedding that over there at Bridge Park. And it's kind of, while it's on a good kind of side street, it's on that side street, but it's very walkable and all of that. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes. So I want to thank Michelle for that. I want to thank Crawford Hoing for this announcement, and hopefully that'll be a very successful market and one goal that we have been able to achieve. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports. I don't think I have a list of my committee on here, so I'm just going to wing it. We're going to go in alphabetical order instead of the way we normally go. Chris, Administrative Committee.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on our retreat. And I'm sure we'll have several follow-up work sessions and so forth as a result of the discussions that we had there. We have a couple of big projects that will be upcoming. I will probably be flooding your inbox tomorrow as we ran out of time to discuss some things this evening. But we have a few more projects upcoming, and look for, look in your email box for information regarding those.
Mayor, if I may, on that note about retreat, I would anticipate we'll have a summary report back to you for your April 9th packet.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Community Development Committee, John.
We will be having a meeting here. I guess we're not going to have executive session before our next city council meeting, so we're going to have a community development meeting, cover the beautify your neighborhood grants. So if you would please arrive an hour early, we'll beat our way through that and come out with good results. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Finance Committee, Mike.
We have regularly scheduled meetings, quarterly finance meeting scheduled for April 9th. And I've talked with Dana and I've talked with Angel. And we thought it might be a better idea to move that meeting to April 23rd as opposed to spending the time on first quarter financials. So one of the, one of the things that we want to talk about, really spend our time getting an update on the city's debt position and debt policy. We've got new council folks. There's been a lot of discussion about the debt. You know, how much is there? What's our capacity? And so I think that's a better use of the time for that finance committee meeting. Certainly we'll be able to have questions answered from Angel on really anything to do with the first quarter budget. But by facilitating this discussion in April, we'll either reaffirm our prior policy or request changes. Staff will be really in a position so that we can work through the CIP. Because really without having, that is the basis going forward, without having the, the way we want to deal with debt, debt capacity, it makes it very difficult to plan the CIP. So that's my recommendation, and with your approval, that's what we'll do. Is that okay?
Mike, I have one question. In our packet were these financial reports through February 28th.
Right.
There was a lot of information in here, and some of it, I think, warranted discussion. Can we put on that agenda maybe financials to date whenever that meeting is held and have a brief discussion?
Yeah, and some of that'll change. That'll change a lot depending on time of year and tax returns and tax filings. And so it might even be a better opportunity to do it then.
Yeah.
You might want to even have one-on-ones if there's specific questions, because there is a lot of material there. If you really have a lot of detailed questions, because we could spend hours going through that report. But if we could get an executive summary, if that would be okay, overview of it, and then if there's more detail, I would recommend one-on-ones. Angel, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, and to that point, as a new council member, and in the last couple months, there have been comments in there that, you know, there are fluctuations and this is normal. So what would be helpful in that regard would be to see some year-over-year trends, because then it is easy to see that. So when we're looking at some of that in discussion, because then you feel, okay, this is a cyclical thing, this is a normal cyclical thing. But I think that would be helpful, because I had some of those similar questions being, being new and seeing some of that trend data along with it, I think would be, would be helpful.
So just for clarification, normally our quarterly report that we provide to council provides a comparison of, for example, first quarter last year through first quarter of this year, categories for expenditures, categories for revenues. I do that on a quarterly basis because, and we can certainly do that on a monthly basis, but the value of, it does fluctuate, especially the first quarter here. So we really have focused the efforts on the details on a quarterly basis, but if that's something council wants to see.
Well, how much data, I mean, trends are kind of a funny thing in finance. So what, are you looking for three years, five years, 10 years in terms of trending? And that even changes dramatically when you look at the economic downturn in '08, '09, '10 even.
Well, I'm not, yeah.
Long tail recovery, so.
You know, to me, things that I'm used to seeing as a three-year trend, five-year trend, that sort of thing. Not to look all the way back to 2008 or '09. I mean, I totally get that. But it's hard, I think, looking at this as a snapshot in time. But if quarterly we feel that's the better way to do it.
Well, the data's there. I mean, it's just a matter of pulling it together.
When did you say that meeting was going to be, Mike?
April 20th. It was originally scheduled for the 9th. We're looking at the 23rd at 6:00 P.M.
So we should have first quarter data?
Oh, yeah, we'll have full first quarter data by then.
In fact, I have it for you in your April 9th packet. And normally what we end up doing in the past is just spend that time, usually a 15 to 20 minutes, kind of going over that report. But that report is pretty comprehensive. And I don't want to waste your time also just sitting there regurgitating what's in a written report. But certainly I'm always open to answer any questions you have.
We've done some other of these as well. In fact, we had our, one of our investment advisors come and explain how the money was invested with respect to the bond issues we've invested in, et cetera, where our money is invested and the returns and how those are working. That might be something we want to do third or fourth quarter even.
Right. I think the first quarter especially is a good opportunity to focus on something else, not because it doesn't matter, but because income tax revenues, which is 90% of our general fund revenue, we really don't even know till after April. So from a revenue standpoint, we don't put a lot of, a lot of focus on January, February, and March, because it can be up and down with no rhyme or reason. So I think we're better, better off spending our first quarter update, really focusing on a different topic that's relevant, but certainly whatever council, you know, feels appropriate.
Well, I think it's a good idea to go through the debt. But we've had a lot of discussion. There's been some, many questions, in fact. And I think we all, with the new council, need to reprioritize, at least understand or reaffirm what the prior policy was. I personally feel very good about it, but, you know, we were here and authored it over the last 10, 15 years. So as John has and as Greg has been involved.
And I think, too, when we crafted the policy, we always intended to do a review of that policy. I think that's what we talked about when Angel first presented the policy, was to take a review of it, you know, one year, two years out from, from the design of the policy in the first place. So it's a great time to be doing that.
Yeah, that's the point of having the discussion. So if that's okay with everybody, that's what we'll do. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Certainly, if there are any specific questions on anything that you see that seems off in the monthly report, or, I'll make sure the quarterly report will be distributed April 9th, but I'm here and willing to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Angel, I always appreciate that, because a lot of times, just to save time in our meetings, it's good that you're always receptive and, and the newer members can call you up and say, hey, what does this really mean? So a lot of us have rehashed this for 20 years and have been following this thing. So it's appreciated your, your attitude about, hey, well, I'll take any question and not hold up some of the meeting time.
She's been great. I've, we've had a few sessions, right? So she's got my number now, so when it comes up, so.
I mean, here's a whole pile of investments, one after the other, three pages back and front. And to that end, having the investment advisor in, maybe even in the second quarter would be a good idea to have everybody meet.
Yeah, and I do want to point out, that's a new report. That's something when we were talking to the rating agencies last year, they, you know, wanted to know, they really want to make sure that council and the decision-makers have an understanding. So we just started putting that report in your packet February for January.
We have an investment policy that we adhere to very, very carefully, and that was really put together with Angel's group, finance, and with the blessing of city council. So maybe at some point we want to review that investment policy, so there's a broader understanding of how that works as well. It really fits hand in glove with, with the overall debt, debt service issue as well. It's kind of the yin and the yang.
Okay. Public Services Committee, Christina.
So I'll be working with Judy to get some dates on the calendar after retreat and doing a little bit of focusing on aging in place and sort of figure out what that needs to look like moving forward. And Michelle will be helping me out with that.
Great. Arts Council, John.
Just not too early to plug the May 4th Friday Garden Party. Always fabulous food, a wonderful silent auction, so a great time. It's one of the, I think, nicer evenings we have in our city, so. Put it on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina.
We have not met since the last minute.
Logan Union, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission Representative, Kathy.
Yeah, they, there was an executive meeting last week, and staff member Tammy Noble attended regular course of business. Maybe one thing of note that Champaign County is going to redo their comprehensive regional plan or update. That last time was 2004, so that could be interesting, so. Thanks.
Okay. Warpsy, Chris.
Yes, we met last week. Dana had sent Judy an email about distributing some of the notes from that meeting, and I didn't see those.
It was for the next, I thought it was for the next packet. Because I think by the time I got them, the packet had already gone out.
Packs were assembled. Good. Okay. You'll have a summary in your next packet evidently then from our meeting, but things are continuing to progress, and I'll keep you posted.
U.S. 33 corridor, Kathy.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up on April 13th.
Okay. Planning and zoning, Jane.
Um, no, I'm with the retreat, so I was at the last one, and this week is canceled, but.
The ARB and P&amp;Z are going to meet again for a work session to have a little bit more time to talk about the Bridge Street zoning code updates, and that's a good thing. So, yeah, that's all I have on that.
Great, thank you, Jane. Washington Township, I don't know, Dana, do you have anything Washington Township?
No, nothing. I know they got a meeting in the morning, but no.
I had an opportunity during the parade. I watched a lot of the parade with Chief Bostic. He's just such a great guy. If you, you want to just sit and talk to somebody who's just a pleasure to talk to, spend some time with Gene Bostic. He's a, he's a great guy. We made some plans for me to go to one of their township meetings, so I will do that. Dublin Friendship City, Christina.
We have a meeting that's coming up shortly.
Okay. Roundtable, Jane.
Well, I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the retreat, and I loved hearing what everybody's goals for the year were, so I'm looking forward to that. A couple of things that I've been involved in, I had a really nice meeting with Scott Ring over the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They are so far ahead in their yearly goals, and the marketing of the downtown district is just amazing. One of the things I learned was that they're opening up to a wider region. They found out that a lot of people are coming up to Dublin from West Virginia and Pittsburgh, and it's a, it's a destination place. And we talked about the possibility, and I was going to make a little meeting with economic development, looking for ways to incentivize getting more retail down into the historic district, because we're so, we have so many beautiful restaurants. But if there is a way that we can encourage more retail down there, that would be great. Of course, I know Donna knows that already. And the other thing is, there's a really nice meeting that Streets and Utilities is doing for the folks over there at Tuttle and Avery Cara Road with the new Tuttle extension. Those folks have reached out, and we've got Colton Back Park on March 20th booked. And Streets and Utilities is nice enough to spend the evening out there talking to a pretty good-sized group of folks. And I just want to congratulate you, Greg, and you, Dana, on winning the second and third place in the Great Lakes Contest and Great Legs in Kilt.
You had to say that, didn't you, in third place?
And we have pictures in case the public would like to see them.
Mailer.
And that's all I have.
He wrote a $25 check. Couldn't keep up with that. Thank you, Jane. Kathy?
You had to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one of those. I also, as my first retreat, enjoyed it very much, and thank you for, Chris, for trying something innovative. And I enjoyed it very much, and I learned a lot, so thanks. I also learned that if you're, if you're going to pass out candy in the parade, you don't walk, you run. I mean, it seems so gentle when you're standing on the side, you know, getting the candy. But I got to tell you, that, that was a workout. So, you know, trying to catch up with the bus and refill the basket. I'm going to have to prepare for that next year. Just, yeah, lessons learned. Jane and I attended the Dublin Japanese Festival at Sayota High School on March 4th, and it was just fantastic. I mean, great entertainment, music, crafts, food, artistry. It was just a reminder of really, really how rich our cultural fabric here is in the community. So we really enjoyed that. So thanks to the city for the invite. And then finally, on our news in 90 this morning, I don't know how many of you went to your Alexa and did your skills and downloaded so you can get the news of Dublin. So now you can hear Josh on the new radio. So I did it. I did it under 90 seconds. The only thing I can say is Alexa woke up three times when she heard her name, all excited. So that was really kind of fun. But to that end, and I think, Dana, to the point earlier about the app and some of the technology, there's just really so many incredible things that are happening right now that are fairly low cost. They're not free, certainly fairly low cost as devices. I think it would be fantastic if we could ask Doug and the team to come sometime now before summer and give us a bit of an update about these technologies and some of the things that we're thinking about. I'm not speaking specifically about the smart corridor and that, but really technologies like this and some of the pilots, and, and things that we can do and incorporate as we go into our planning for next year. Because this is just a great example of a pilot that I think could do some really terrific things. So Dana, if we could, if we could work on that.
Let me give that some thought, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I had a conversation today with Metro Parks, and we were discussing the new dog park. And, you know, I have to go back to one, and maybe one reason they have this is, I have to go back to one of our residents by the name of Aaron Gibbons, who said one time, she said, you know, I see where you got, brought the idea down here for dog park from Boston and New York. I don't really like your dog park. And this is before we upgraded it. She says, I take my dogs over to Worthington to run. And it's just a sad thing that, I was thinking about this today, that, you know, as much she liked, liked those two dogs, she had, she has passed away since then. And her dad, Jack, who I think a lot of you know, and Kay Gibbons, Jack's very ill also, so. But it's interesting. So I just want to mention the fact that somehow she had something to do with this dog park at Metro Park. And the fence isn't in yet, so don't run up there with your dogs. And it's probably going to be open about June 1st. And then the other exciting, rather exciting thing about that whole program is the challenge park. And they've got kids running all over the obstacle course now, and it isn't finished, nor is the road in. And I don't know if it's our residents or it's other people who are up there climbing over all this thing. And they don't seem to be very upset about it, but they said it, too, hopefully, will be dedicated on the, the 1st of June also. So we're all looking forward to that. All of us who love to get out and exercise. So it should be a lot of fun. It's going to be an exciting part.
Great, thanks, John. Mike?
You know, I've decided that I no longer want to pack it anymore. I'm going to take the bull by the horns, and I'm going to use the iPad. And I've gotten used to it, so no more packet for me. We'll see how it goes.
Subject to change.
I told you, I was going to go.
And I'm hoping that some of my fellow councilmen will join me, who have not already. And one other thing, then, just thanks to Chris for all the effort on the retreat. Anybody that's ever done that work knows it's a labor of love and a lot, a lot of work to pull all that together, and appreciate it. And somebody has a birthday, don't they?
Yes, she does.
And happy birthday.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Thanks. I, too, don't want to pack it, but I've said this before, and I keep getting them, so. Thank you, Chris, for the retreat. I thought it was really fun to hear some of the things that you guys are all really passionate about. I thought it was great. I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed everything that we covered. I had a couple of people call me on potholes, so I'm trying to remind folks, and I'll say it here today, that you can report potholes. There's a place online you can go do it. Have a little sense of humor about it, but report those potholes. And Megan knows what I'm talking about. She'll get right on it. This Friday, Michelle and I have a summit regarding aging in place. We're bringing together a bunch of community leaders to talk about some of the efforts and some of the things that we want to be doing, including the Alexa pilot. So I'm pretty excited about that. So I look forward to that on Friday, and I'll let y'all know how it goes. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Chris?
A couple of things. Dana, I saw on your city manager engagement that you received a 161 Riverside, 161 roundabout update on February the 15th. And so hopefully we'll get to see some information about those updates as well. That would be, be of interest. I see here that there's a Western Roads Alignment Study is coming to fruition, and do you have an idea when we might see what those look like? The Bridge Street District Western Roads Alignment Study by EMH and T.
Right, I, yes. We can get you an update on it.
Says a draft study has, has been received, so I'd be interested in seeing what that has to say. Also talks about the Dublin Community Pool North renovation. It says that the request for professional design services has been advertised, and initial responses due back on March the 9th. Did that, I know that Mike particularly had talked about some enclosure possibilities. Did we include that in?
Yes, I have asked. Matt and I just spoke about that the other day, I think it was, or last week or so. And that's definitely something that we'll be exploring.
Bubbles.
It may or may not be a bubble, but it might be some option for enclosure. So we definitely don't want to miss that opportunity if the opportunity presents.
Good. I just wanted to make sure, since we were requesting the design services, that that, that was in there. What's that?
Three years.
Good. Judy, I did not see a response to the email today about boards and commissions. That'll be on our next agenda. So thank you for taking the time last Monday for those interviews. I have to give a shout out to my friends, Eli Penny, the fourth grade. On the March the 7th, I got to spend some time with them, and it really was fantastic. And what a, what a great bunch of kids are growing up in this community. Really great questions. I did attend the Dublin Community Foundation Board Meeting on the 8th as their new ex officio board member. I'm hopeful that Michelle or Dana will get us some information about the results of that meeting. It's a little too detailed to go into with respect to roundtable, but they, they are off to a great start. They had a great meeting. There's a lot of energy there, and they are looking forward to doing great things. One of the topics on the agenda had to do with the potential theater development in the community, which probably will go a different direction than it was headed that particular morning. So I'm hopeful that we'll see some information to all of council on that so that we can kind of come up with some policy for that. Thank you, Dana, for the state of the city. You and Dr. Hoadley did a wonderful job and represented the city with excellence. And so wanted to thank you and all the staff for putting that together. It was a well-done event. I did have the opportunity to meet, to go to the Greater Dublin Realty Commission meeting on Friday morning. They had a lot of really good questions regarding the schools and development within the city. The, you know, the housing stock for sale is really kind of record-low inventory levels. And I think they're going to want to pursue perhaps some more conversations of what we anticipate that looking like in the future. Again, thank you to the staff and to the community for attending the parade. That was great. And again, I, too, am proud that we at least, we didn't win, but we placed and showed in the best legs in the kilt. So, hey, I'm going to chalk that up as a victory. It was a lot of fun.
I never dreamed I'd learn how to bribe judges, and now I, now I know all about it.
You know, they raised a lot of money for a great cause, and it sure was.
Hi, Julie.
Sure did look like people had a lot of fun doing it. So, and Julie reaped some benefits, so, you know, who can complain about that? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I'm going to be a little bit repetitious here, but it's important things to repeat. Thank you to you, Chris, for all the efforts you put into the retreat, and happy birthday. The state of the community, Dana, off the charts. Again, very proud of what you presented along with Dr. Hoadley. It was done extremely well. And the parade. You know, chief, everybody on this staff, I mentioned it at the Grand Leprechaun thing. It all looks like you do it without breaking a sweat, but I know there's a lot of sweat that goes into it. So it does not go unnoticed, and we greatly appreciate what you do for our community. So I heard somewhere that the school system is, the schools are putting on a dodgeball tournament. And I heard, and it was my son, my 14-year-old son, told me that he's going to be in this dodgeball tournament. I said, how many, yeah, that's where I go for all my information. I said, how many people are on dodgeball team? And he said, seven. And I thought, ooh. So I sent her around and emailed to my fellow council members, and I got unanimous buy-in. We are going to participate and field a team in the schools' dodgeball tournament.
Be afraid. Be very afraid.
You should be very, very afraid. I've let Dr. Hoadley know. The smack talk has already started. So I think it's the first or second week of April, this crew up here will be with the.
Just putting red marks all over those people.
Red marks all over the youngest children.
It's going to be brutal.
So I'm very proud. John, you're always harping on us to get out there and exercise. And former Mayor Keenan was the first one to respond and said, yes.
Are we going to have a police presence there, Chris?
We're going to have to have one. Chief, we're going to need all the help we can get.
I'm more concerned about having Washington Township's ambulance fire there.
Who's making the t-shirts?
Large bags of ice.
I am. They're going to say, don't break your meniscus.
Don't break your meniscus. That's right.
We might want to practice, guys, a little bit.
So proud of my fellow council members for weighing in and agreeing to do that. That'll be a lot of fun. And with that, we are adjourned.
Okay.